Good evening. My name is Megan Brady and I'm an educator at the Kennedy School. Thank you for coming to the Somerville Educators Union's mayoral and school committee forum this evening. This event is hosted by the Political Action Team, which is a subcommittee of the SEU. We are excited to hear directly from their candidates on their views to promote a more equitable school district for our students. This is our union's first time engaging in this type of forum with these candidates, and we're doing so virtually. We appreciate your understanding and flexibility in advance for any bumps we may encounter. I'd like to take a moment for the other moderator this evening to introduce himself. DeShawn?
Good evening, everyone. My name's DeShawn Simmons and I'm an educator at the Healy School.
As with most candidates forums, we have some norms that we would like our candidates and viewers to follow. Candidates should respect their time limits. When you have 10 seconds left in your response, Steve Stefano will hold up a red card, like so. So you'll know you have 10 seconds left. You will be muted when your time is finished. Candidates will only be unmuted by the moderators, and should a candidate have a question, you can message me directly. We request that candidates speak with each other and moderators respectfully. We ask the candidates to have their camera on while they are speaking. For the format this evening, we'll start with mayoral candidates. We'll begin with a two-minute introduction for all candidates and then go through a series of questions. At that point, we'll then transition into a school committee forum. So for the two-minute intro, we will start by going alphabetically by last name, and you'll have two minutes to speak, introduce yourself, and we'll go from there. So it'll be Katiana, then Mary, then Will Mbah, then Will Toro. Katiana, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, SEU, for hosting this event. My name is Katiana Ballantyne and I'm running for mayor. For 18 years, I've been the proud parent of two daughters in the Somerville Public Schools, and I have five more years to go. My family's experience with the schools has been very positive. My older daughter graduated in 2015. My younger daughter is a seventh grader at the East. In this time, any challenges that I've seen were resolved by dialogue and between the city administration, teachers, and parents. And many of our challenges I saw coming from lack of resources. As mayor, I will invest in our teachers and students so we have the resources to help them thrive in our schools. A little about me, I was born in Orfandin, Greece, adopted there by a Scottish father and a Czech-German mother. We are a family of immigrants who came to the U.S. when I was four. I was the first in my family to go to college. I worked two jobs and took out loans to get a BA and an MBA. For nearly the last three decades, I've been working in international business, startup, nonprofit, and government. I've served seven years on the city council, twice elected city council president. This scope of experience has given me the skills to be the chief executive. I believe there are three qualities, three key qualities, for our next mayor. She needs to embody the cultures and values of Somerville. She needs to be an inclusive leader, and she needs to have the skills and experience to be the chief executive of our dynamic city. I'm running, I believe, because I believe I can best bring these critical qualities to the mayor's office. My vision for Somerville is a city of inclusion with equity where we can thrive together. If you share this vision, then I hope to earn your support and endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having this forum tonight. And I want to congratulate and thank everyone for the year that you've had. It has been challenging for students, teachers, parents, and all of the school officials and city involved. And so I want dealing with some of the repercussions of the challenges we've all faced from the pandemic. So my name is Mary Cassasso. I'm a lifelong Somerville resident. That does not make me qualified or the reason that I'm running for mayor, but rather the combination of my lived experiences and my vast experiences in government, always working on safety net services, health equity, and social justice. So a little bit about growing up in Somerville. My mother was a single mom, and there were four of us. And we lived in one of the apartments in my grandmother's three-family home. And that was in the Nunnery grounds. And I, '93, ended up being right in my backyard. And so that was one of the areas early on that my family, from my grandmother to my mother and every uncle and cousin, got involved in trying to depress the elevated structure, fully understanding the impact it was going to have on health. And my mother in particular has serious health issues as related to that. But that wasn't the only issue she involved us in. We grew up boycotting grapes and iceberg lettuce because of the working conditions and wages of farm workers. We fought for East Somerville Health Center and was involved in the grant writing because there was not even one pediatrician in East Somerville. That, with all my experience in healthcare, is the reason I am excited to be the next mayor of Somerville.
Thank you, Mary. Will?
Thank you, Megan, and DeShawn for organizing this, for having me. I'm really happy to be here, and I want to appreciate any other person that participated in this event. So my name is Will Mbah. I'm running for mayor of Somerville because for too long, the needs of the most marginalized in our communities have been ignored. Government is not working for them, and because it's way too hard for people to afford to live here and raise their families here. I know exactly how this feels. I'm an immigrant from Cameroon, and I know what it's like to feel like you're working hard but barely getting by. My parents both died when I was a young boy, and I was raised by my family members in a foster home. In 2010, I was lucky enough to be selected to receive a visa to come to the United States at work. But when I came here, I saw that our government did not always work for you when you needed most. I experienced it when I tried to sign up for Mass Health, but I was denied. So many people in Somerville have similar experience. What has been housing or education, I'm experiencing this too. I know what it feels like every time you move because of rising rents. I know how issues of environmental justice are intertwined with issues of racial justice. There has been progress on some of these issues. Don't get me wrong, but it has not happened quick enough. Until we have a government that reflects the population that is serving, how can we talk about issues of racial equity and environmental justice? That's why I'm running for mayor, to accelerate our community's progress on these issues and change the conversation. I have a track record that demonstrates what we can achieve if I'm elected mayor. On the city council, I led the effort to create the Office of Housing Stability because I know how it feels not to know where you're going to live. I led the fight to ban racial profiling because it was a step towards justice. And I've been there to tackle problems, big and small, whenever our neighbors have needed someone to fight for them. Right now, the most marginalized and vulnerable in Somerville do not have to sit at a table, but developers and special interests from outside of our community do. If I'm elected mayor, I promise I'm going to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Billy?
Hi, how are you? I'm Megan. Thank you, John. My name is Billy Toro. I'm a, my parents are immigrated from Italy. When my father came here, he joined the United States Army. He became a sergeant, stormed the beaches of Normandy, fought for our country, came back from war, went to, he went to auto mechanics, opened up a business, and raised a family. I have five brothers. I have two children. My daughter is 32 years old. She's a Somerville Saint Anthony's graduate of Somerville. And she's also a St. Clement's graduate of Somerville Bedford. And she's also a Salem State graduate. Now she's a nurse at Lahey Clinic as a head nurse. My son is a graduate, is a St. Clement's student as well, a graduate, then became a Somerville High School graduate. Now he's a publisher of the Somerville News Weekly, and he's 27 years old. My wife is of Brazilian descent, and that's why I'm very, very involved with the immigration community out there, and I want to treat everyone equally. My expertise is focusing on solving problems. Somerville's broken. Somerville is severely broken. It's been broken for seven years. Nothing has changed. Nothing has gotten better. It's gotten worse. I want to solve parking problems, schoolroom problems, housing problems, policing problems, and just about everything Somerville has wrong with it. I'm a problem solver. As mayor, I will get the job done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for those introductions. And with that, we're going to move into our first question, and we will have the responses be a minute and a half. And just as time, Steve Stefano will raise a red paper when it's time. And for the order of questions, this time, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. And so this time, we'll hear from Billy Toro first, followed by Will, followed by Mary, and then followed by Katiana. So your first question here is, "The current starting salary for a Somerville paraprofessional is $25,000. MIT's living wage calculator estimates that a living wage in Middlesex County would be $35,000. Would you support a $35,000 starting salary for Somerville paraprofessionals? Why or why not?" Billy?
I think our teachers are underpaid because you get what you pay for. We have to increase their pay. We have to really make them happy, let them earn their living. This way, when they come in with a clear head, they're doing the right things for our kids. Like I said, you get what you pay for. I think every teacher deserves a raise, and they deserve the best healthcare possible.
Thank you very much. Will?
Thank you for that question. This is for me. I see this as an equity issue because the majority of our paraprofessionals are people of color. And that's where our school staff get most of their diversity from. And I want to say, these are people also that I really love. I was proud to stand shoulder to shoulder with them when they were fighting for better wages. I told the mayor clearly, you know, that I wasn't going to vote for the budget if the paraprofessional didn't get a deal, and they finally got it. But that did not go far enough. I can assure you that. So as mayor, I'll go further by supporting, by supporting to pay our paraprofessional a living wage they deserve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mary?
I agree. That is an incredibly low salary where people cannot afford to live, to have adequate housing, even adequate food. It's such an important role to have the privilege to work with any of our children. And having worked a year at the Kennedy School early in my career, I understand the demands on schoolteachers. And I also understand the balancing act that families have to pay. We should not be making it harder by not paying sufficient wages to important members. And I agree, it's the diversity. It's inequitable. We need to do better.
Thank you very much. Katiana?
Thank you. I know the importance of our pairs because having seen firsthand the care and the compassion that they treated my daughters. And I do support this also. It's important to fully fund our schools and fully fund our budgets, thinking about where the revenue is coming from. Two ways are through commercial taxes and through better community benefits. In my experience, a job is about more, sometimes more than just the money. We should pay all of our staff a living wage and make sure they have access to the jobs that they are proud of and gives them the support that they need. Our pairs are diverse and are reflective of our student population, which is majority-minority children of color. We should go one step further and create a paraprofessional career ladders program so we can move, so if they want to, they can move into teaching positions. This gives the option for upward mobility so they can build a better life.
Thank you all. At this point, we have a 45-second quick follow-up question just for Will Mbah and Katiana Ballantyne. You were both in elected office during the paraprofessional contract campaign last year. What actions did you take to support a living wage for paraprofessionals in the role you had? And Will will start with you. 45 seconds.
Trying to mute myself here. Sorry about that. Yeah, no, I said, thank you again for that follow-up question. I think I said it during my intro, that when I went and spoke at the rally, you know, spoke forcefully and drew a line in the sand with the mayor. And I said I wasn't going to vote for the budget unless they have a faculty, and they actually, you know, did. But like I just, you know, also said a moment ago that I will go further, you know, to make sure that they deserve better. So I was right there with them on the picket line, and I spoke forcefully, and I stood my ground. Thank you.
Hey, Katiana?
Thank you. So I also spoke with the mayor and I supported the vote.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. For our second question, we, for the second question, our order will, I'm not sure, Megan, did we want to change the order again just so everyone has a good opportunity? So for this, for this time around, we'll have Mary begin, followed by Will, followed by Katiana, and then Billy. This question is, "What changes would you implement to ensure the availability of and access to high-speed internet in Somerville?" I'm sorry, I can read that one more time. I know I wrote that a little interestingly. "What changes would you implement to ensure the availability of and access to high-speed internet in Somerville?"
Thank you. You know, the high-speed internet became so apparent, not just for the disparity among students in the classroom, even among families. We saw it in healthcare, where telehealth was introduced so very quickly, despite the fact that for many years, families had wanted the convenience of telehealth. It was able to be brought up so quickly under those circumstances. But I think that we need to be working with the utility companies to be guaranteeing that becomes part of the contract negotiations. I believe the Comcast contract is up for renewal in 2022, and that is an important starting point. I also believe that we need to be providing resources in the interim to make up the gaps. We know in poorer neighborhoods, there was less running of appropriate wires to make the broadband capacity available to families. So I think this becomes a priority. It's a huge issue of equity, and we have to use our negotiations abilities with the utility companies.
Thank you very much. Will?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. First, I want to say that high-speed internet should be a necessity for our students, not a luxury, especially after this past year. I know personally how important it is for students to have high-speed internet. So one of the recommendations, I'll just go straight, you know, to it is, is I will build on the recommendation of the Internet Access Task Force that was formed in 2019. You know, we need to build more fiber cable. This access across the city that can be opened up for use and competition by more internet providers in the future. And I will say that my dream, you know, one day will be to have high-speed internet, to be a public utility available for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Katiana?
Thank you. So high-speed internet is a necessity. As my colleagues before me said, during the pandemic, we saw too many in Somerville who struggled to have internet connection. And specifically, you know, there were about 500 students in our Somerville Public Schools who didn't have access, and everybody sort of stepping in to make sure that they were connected. I agree with my colleagues that working with the utilities, making sure that there's a task force in place, using the ARPA money, so the American Recovery money that is coming in to help reinforce and pay for the, and make sure that the infrastructure is placed, is something that we need to do because it is an equity issue, and we need to address it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Billy?
Let's face it, there's nothing worse than a frozen screen, a slow computer, or a broken computer. Somerville is broken. For the last seven years, this should have been done. Internet, internet's been around for a long time. You can go Highland Ave., you won't get internet. My own office on Joy Street, there's no internet. You can go to good parts of Assembly Road, there is no internet. We built a state-of-the-art city within a city there. There is lacking internet speed. I would negotiate with the carriers. I would let them come in with their best price and put the best internet in our schools, our cities, for our community, for everybody. Right now, I could tell you, you can go up and down Highland Avenue, you can go up and down Metta Street, you can go Joy Street, you go all around Assembly Road, and a good part of Ward 7, it's broken. Seven years, nothing's been done, nothing, but sitting on hands. That will end once I'm elected mayor.
Thank you, Billy.
All right. Our next question is, I'll say the order first. So the order for responses will be Billy, Mary, Katiana, and Will. And the question is, "Educators have been putting in 3-1-1 requests to deal with issues in the buildings for years, only for them to be unaddressed. And COVID has clarified the current state of disrepair in our school buildings and other municipal buildings. As mayor, what will you do to ensure that our school buildings are maintained and updated to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for our students?" Billy, Katiana, Will?
All right. Well, when you call 3-1-1, it's useless. Nothing gets done. No answer, no calls get answered unless you want to plow to front of your house. It's the only time they answer it. But as mayor, and if they don't answer, they're fired, plain and simple. If they don't answer, I'll have a direct line to the mayor's office, and they'll make sure someone's connected immediately. There's nothing more important than communication. Without communication, there's nothing, nothing whatsoever. I don't know if it's radio, TV, newspaper, anything, your computer, you need communication. Without communication, there is nothing. So if our elected official don't know what's going on by 3-1-1, there's a problem. Again, it's broken. It's been like that for over 10 years, and I will fix that.
Thank you, Billy. Mary?
Yes. I think 3-1-1 was an improvement, just like I think the internet and Zoom has made it more available and accessible for families to plug into meetings and understand. But all of these systems improvements also have to be monitored and evaluated for how they are working and understanding what's not working. Are there radical resources? Are the phone lines sufficient for the calls to get through, et cetera? So, you know, I have extensive experience in financial areas too with long-range plans and budgets. I believe in open policies and communications and participatory budgeting for us to identify our highest priorities. There's no doubt there's a lot of investments that are needed, but we know there's not a limitless pot to do them all. What are the most important issues we need to deal with? And I think families need to have the resources, they need to have their calls responded to, and we all need, as residents of the city, to feel that our city services are responding to our needs.
Thank you, Mary. Katiana?
Thank you. So 3-1-1, what can we do and how will we do it this year in terms of the budget? And actually, I've worked with Steve Craig, the director of Constituent Services, to talk about some of the failures that are technology. So we need to invest in the technology to make sure that the calls are being answered appropriately. We also, and in the tracking, and right now, it is the IAM, Infrastructure and Asset Management, which oversees the buildings. And we have approved new personnel for support of problems like this because the last year showed that we haven't been maintaining. And so that's what we're going to do going forward. I do believe that as our city is growing, that we also need to make sure that the support systems and the infrastructure is in place. Part of the way to budget for this is also through ARPA and through commercial taxes.
Thank you, Katiana. And Will?
Thank you, Megan. I want to say that this is, to me, I mentioned this yesterday, like, it's about values. And I have said it multiple times, that budget is a reflection of our values. So one of the things I'll do is I will fully fund our schools. You know, this means I'm following through with improvement in physical plans that, you know, we started. Because look at, it's only now that sometimes we are trying to fix stuff just because we haven't really been paying attention. The best way to do that is to increase our overall budget for schools. And I have to even say that, you know, teachers should not even be calling 3-1-1 for these issues. It doesn't show respect for them, and it doesn't show that we prioritize our students and our schools. Full stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For our next question, the order of responses will be Will, Billy, Mary, and Katiana. This is the question, "The Brown School is 64% white, and the Kennedy School is 69.4% white, while the East Somerville Community School is 69.9 Latinx. What do you see as the root causes of this inequity, and how you propose to address it?" Again, the order is Will, Billy, Mary, and Katiana.
Thank you for that question. Again, this is just a reflection of the response that I just get. This is not, this did not happen by accident. This is the root cause of racism because everything, like I mentioned, our budget is racist. Racist zoning laws, historic racist society. So it's intentional, it's by design. So we have to find a way to disaggregate our schools through a fair process that involves community input and respects the model of strong community schools. Getting rid of this, you know, district preferences is one of the things that I will, you know, strike out because it's unfair.
Thank you so much. Billy?
Yeah, you know, something, I'm getting really tired. It's getting old about hearing about racism. Racism, it's getting racism. It's not about racism. These schools, you know, back in the day, when I grew up, you always went to school, you walked to school. You walked to the closest school that was in your neighborhood. Why should I have a kid walk from his house, pass that school to another school? Schools, schools have neighborhoods, just a neighborhood school. And they, and they were all put in that school for that reason. It has nothing to do with racism. I don't even know why we're even going there. You should be embarrassed even saying that. But I would look into the school. I would make it a priority, make sure there is nothing racial going on over there. But most schools belong to neighborhoods, called the neighborhood school. A kid's supposed to be able to walk to a school. A parent should be able to walk his child to the kindergarten. He shouldn't have to drive across town and pass five other schools. That's ridiculous. I believe keeping neighborhood schools in the neighborhood.
Thank you. If you have a question for a candidate, we would like all the candidates to have a chance to respond first. Does that sound correct, Megan? And then we'll, if there's a follow-up question? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Billy. Mary?
Thank you for the question. I grew up, as I mentioned, in East Somerville. And just like Ward 4, they have always been the poorest parts of the city. And as a result, that's why we have the environmental injustice in East Somerville and Ward 4. We always got less of what we wanted and more of what should have been shared throughout the city. So I am a strong believer that we do have to address and that there is racism in the fact that those neighborhoods, the only areas that people can afford, and that quickly is disappearing, to live in areas of Somerville. Somerville is being, families are priced out of Somerville. I do a lot of work on affordable housing, and we're losing the ability for any of the diversity that has enriched this community for so many years to continue. So we do have to make plans to address that. And I do think that we should have more language options in all of our schools to make that something that is implemented in the younger grades when the kids are very receptive to learning more languages. But I do think that racism plays an issue, and investment in communities and neighborhoods play an issue. And we have to be more intentional about addressing that.
Thank you, Mary. Katiana?
Thank you. So I see the root So I see the root causes of inequity, inequity as inefficient access to resources. This is jobs, this is healthy food, this is affordable housing, safety, and open space. So, you know, some solutions is, you know, considering a student-based budgeting, changing the way that we fund schools. Data reveals that kids who are from lower-income families require more financial resources. I also, you know, think that we need to invest in equity. On the city council, starting, well, four years ago, maybe a little longer, I started the initiative to invest in girls. Because there is no equal funding, or there isn't equal funding when it comes to girls. And most of these girls in the school system are are girls of color. I sat on the Board of Somerville Community Corporation for a decade of an affordable housing developer to help create more affordability. I certainly have, as a city councillor, invested in. And since I've been on the city council, we've built or with developers nearly 600 affordable housing units. So I continue to do that.
Thank you so much. I know that based on comments, you may hear other candidates say, you may have a follow-up or you may want to respond to what they're saying. But we just want to be clear that this forum tonight is an opportunity for educators just to hear your responses. Perhaps a more formal debate might be something we engage in in the fall. But for the purposes of this, it's just for educators to hear your responses. Megan?
Thank you. This is the last question from the political action team. And the response order will be the same as the intro. So Katiana, Mary, Will, Billy. And the final question is, currently, SPS has a lottery to get very limited spots in our pre-kindergarten programming. What changes would you propose to this program? Will you prioritize and fund universal pre-kindergarten? If so, how? Katiana?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Absolutely. Because, you know, the data shows and history shows that funding and supporting financial resources for pre-K helps start the pathway to a healthy and more equitable future. In terms of funding, I mean, quickly, you know, Somerville, 82% of the residential tax base funds the operating budget. 18% comes from commercial office. We need to diversify our tax base. We need to bring in more commercial development. That is possible in Assembly Row, in Boynton Yards, in Union Square, in Inner Belt. And that is the way that we can fund these programs and, you know, help the inequities that we are seeing with our young children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I am absolutely committed to universal pre-K. And in fact, it is not a level playing field from the very beginning for young children when they do not have the opportunity and their family members to be further developing off of economic empowerment. So we have to make that a priority for all children. Because children who aren't in school at a younger age now, and all the other little kids that are, they begin behind. And that's not right. And that's where we begin seeing that divide in the inequity. So I think between the Federal Funding Act, and I'm sure many people look today at Jason Lewis, Senator Lewis's idea of finally making a more progressive tax based on your income. We need to level the playing field. And we need to make resources available for the families. And as I said, education made the biggest difference in my life. It would have made a difference in my mother's life too, if she could have had us, the kids, in school as opposed to being at home. So we have to find the resources. It is a number one priority, and it's an issue of equity.
Well?
Will or Bill?
Will.
Okay. Billy, I gotta go now. So I just wanna say that this is something that is very important to me. Because look at even the way the profile of the city is going. You know? It doesn't, we are not building this city with families in mind. Look at even the high school that we have been, instead of the high school, it's like instead of the art high school in the whole state. Where are the kids that are going to go to that school? We need to incentivize families to come back to the city. So Somerville needs universal pre-K. And as mayor, I'm committed to providing universal pre-K. You know, we know that universal pre-K help our students develop and help close the racial equity gap in schools, just like, you know, Mary mentioned. One of my first actions as mayor will be to create a commission to study this issue and determine how we can fund it. And we can also use state funding, as well as the recent funding from the American Rescue Plan. This will require state collaboration. But I can, you know, assure you that I'm committed to making this happen. Thank you.
Billy?
Hi. I'll allocate the funding necessary for a safe and secure educational structure. I'm gonna find the money. No matter where we're gonna find it, we're gonna find it. We're gonna fund it. You know, the biggest thing is the child's education, especially in the first years of kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. I want these kids to hit the ground running with nothing but the best. It should have already been in place, but I will put it in place day one as mayor of Somerville.
Thank you very much. At this point, we acknowledge that two of the candidates have a finance meeting to get to in a little bit. So we'll take a few questions from the educators in the audience, and we'll make sure you can get to your finance meeting at seven. DeShawn, do you want to ask the first question from the audience? Or would you like me to?
I can go ahead and ask the first one. This, the first question submitted is directed towards Billy Torro. The question reads, and excuse me, I'm reading the question for the first time here. In your Q and A with the educators' union, sorry, your Q and A with the educators' union stated that more police in schools is associated with better outcomes. What outcomes are improved? And where did you get data on that?
Well, through experience, I've worked with a lot of schools. Through, I mean, being a publisher of a paper for so many years, I've seen the problems in schools. I've seen the violence in schools, I've seen the good parts of schools. But I'd be police in the schools, but I have community resource offices within the schools. I'd even hire a security company, a publicized security company, to secure each floor, to make sure, you know, to make sure everyone's doing the right thing. We don't want no hidden trouble. We just want everything to run smooth, smooth, without anyone getting in trouble. I'm gonna also initiate the Hub Initiative that the Chelsea Police Department is using, with community outreach and social workings. So we have the tools to, and you can look at that through my website, www.williamtorro.com, about the Hub Initiative. And it's working in Chelsea. I've studied it for over the last year and a half, and they're doing a great job with it. Now I'll present it to Somerville. Thank you.
For this period, for this section, we're gonna go to one-minute responses.
Thank you, Steve. And that was a question that was specifically for Billy Torro, and we'll move to a general question.
So, general question for one minute. How do you view the relationship between the office of the mayor and the school committee? And for that question, the order will be Mary, Katiana, Billy, Will.
I think that the school committee are probably the most dedicated people that I can think of in the city. And they spend a tremendous amount of time invested in the champion of the families, of course, the kids, and the teachers. I also have, as a certified teacher who worked in the system for a long time, believe that the teachers have been absolutely critical to my success. And a teacher that invests in you is so enriching. So I have to say that I first listened to the voices of the teachers, the parents, the students too. It's so important to hear from the students about their needs. But I also think that we work as community. And we have to learn and balance and grow from one another. But that is the order of priority, and I just got the red signal. Thank you.
Katiana?
Thank you. So the mayor and the office, the school department is a department under the executive branch. And the school committee is an elected body as sort of advisors. They're policy advisors. And they give counsel to the superintendent and to the mayor, and they are the voice of the community. So, I mean, structurally, that's how it works. I would like to also add that I have been known for my inclusive leadership style from my 30 years of work. It takes a little bit longer, but what happens is you get shared buy-in. You get enthusiasm, and then you get a commitment to a better policy.
Thank you. Billy?
Hi. It's a very good question. I think the school council and the mayor's office failed the students and families miserably. They failed the whole system miserably. And I'm gonna begin with the high school. Who builds a $300 million high school that houses 1,700 students, 350 teachers, with zero pocket space? How do you explain that? Where are the people supposed to park? You know, a teacher could drive around for two hours in the snow or the rain. You know, when he comes, when he gets to that class, do you think he or she's gonna be in a good mood? And how's that gonna reflect on the kids? When that school first opened, I took a tour with my staff. And I asked one of the gym teachers, I says, hey, it's a beautiful school, but where do you park? He says, listen, we only opened yesterday, and I got my first $50 ticket. If I get one more, five of us will even. I can't blame them. You're gonna make these people happy, you're gonna make these teachers happy. So the school board and the mayor's office failed the kids and the parents miserably. I would start, number one, by revamping everything. Bring in pocket spaces and start doing, taking care of teachers' needs so that they could do the right.
Thank you. That was time. And Will?
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, this is an interesting question. First, it's been a tough year, you know, for the teachers and parents. And looking at the dynamics, you know, between the mayor's office and the school committee, I wanna say that it's one of having an inclusive collaboration. Especially when you look at, you know, like, let's say, for example, if on COVID-related, you know, like, opening for something like that, I wanna work with all stakeholders, involve students, teachers, parents, some of the educator union, you know? Just activate that listening skills. Listen to the expert on topic. And be sure to make inclusive decisions about anything that concerns schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna try to get in one more question here, because we know some candidates have to be at another meeting. This question reads, and this is for everyone. This question reads, "I am expecting a baby this fall, and I recently spoke to my doctor about parental leave. My doctor was horrified when I told her how much time we are allowed to take compared to our other patients. What are your thoughts on Somerville Public Schools' paid parental leave? What would you change?" And I think this time we can go in reverse order, so Will?
Am I omitted? Yes, okay. Also, this is also like, it's also a value issue. You know, people should deserve a decent, you know, like, sick time. They deserve time to spend with their family. And that even includes even foster parents. Like, we cannot keep, these are basic issues that people should not be fighting about. How do you, how does it, like, how do we wanna try? That is a thriving society, a thriving community like ours should not even be, you know, this should not be a debating issue. So these are issues that I will prioritize to make sure that people spend time with their families, get the necessary, you know, like, sick time that they need every, just so that they can spend more time with their family, they don't have to worry about work. They need to be in class to teach and so on. This is just, and we have seen how this pandemic has exacerbated some of these inequities in our community. So I will be, you know, the first person to advocate for that. Thank you. Oh, my time is up. Oops.
Snuck it in under the wire. Thank you, Will. Billy?
Yeah, it's a great question. There's nothing like a mother and child's bond. They're gonna need time to know each other. Absolutely, far, they need the time together, they need the medical leave, the maternity leave. It's a must. It has to be done. Just like a kindergarten, like a kid starting kindergarten, he's gonna hit the ground running, but he's gonna bond with the teacher. This child just got into, came into the world, he's gonna bond with his mother. And they have to spend a quality time together. I'm 100% forgiven the teacher's maternity leave as much as they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Katiana?
Thank you. I agree with my, with Will and Billy. Absolutely. There should be parent leave. I just, it's a basic right. It's, you know, a human right. I'm the mom of two daughters. I mean, I just, it's a necessity. So, or if you adopt, or if you take foster cares, you know? I just agree with it. And I agree with Will and Billy. And I'm assuming Mary's gonna say yes too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Thanks, Katiana. And yes, I'm going to say yes, but share a little bit of a personal story. I'm an adopt, we're an adoptive family. Peter and I adopted a daughter when she was eight months old. And at the time, Harvard provided five-day leave if you were an adoptive parent. You can see I get emotional about it. And I fought long and hard to change that policy at Harvard. Because if anything, you never want to get your hopes up when you're adopting. And so you, you're not ready. But no family is completely ready. And that tying together and that bonding is so essential. It is a human right and a basic right. And that is the fundamental to starting families off for strong, receptive, learning, growing, lifelong learning. So, red light. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, all. And we have another question from the audience, and this is just to Billy. The question reads, "Not being a person of color, do you think that it is presumptuous of you to state that racism is not a root cause of inequalities in Somerville, specifically in our schools?"
All right. I'm married to a Doc Brazilian, who has a Doc Brazilian son. My daughter is a Doc Italian, and I have a Doc Italian son. She's married to a black Indian. I have a black Indian-based granddaughter. All right. I mean, I don't know what that question's all about, but I'm not racist. I'm a family, I come from a family of immigrants. I have a Japanese and a Chinese niece with seven wonderful Chinese and Japanese nephews and nieces. So I don't even know where that question came from, so I'm gonna ignore it totally.
All right. Thank you. All right, if we can, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm scrolling through the questions here. I'm gonna try to get everything in. All right. "High school students are responsible for their own transportation to and from school. What are your views on the walkability and bikeability for children in our city?" And for this one, Mary, you can begin, followed by Katiana, Billy, and Will.
Thank you. Not good enough. I'm a pedestrian. I walk to work every day. And I watch people biking, walking, I watch the buses. We have some work to do with safety in the community. And it's also so important for your healthy and health and your well-being. And it can be very mindfulness, which is an upstream response to get the exercise by biking or walking. So I don't think we've done a good enough job with our sidewalks and our streets. I have to pay such attention. You look down the entire time for your safety. I worry about the bikers, the inconsistency of bike lanes, et cetera. And then the changes from one community to the next. And our streets. You know, we do live in New England, and the streets have a lot of potholes. So across all fronts, we need to do some work for safety in transportation, even more bus opportunities.
Thank you. Katiana?
Um, yes, could I ask you to please repeat the question because I didn't hear the beginning of it? Please.
Sure thing. The question reads, high school students are responsible for their own transportation to and from school. What are your views on the walkability and bikeability for children in our city?
Uh, one, uh, thank you. Thank you for the, the question. Um, it can always be better. Certainly, uh, we live in the west out by Teal Square. My daughter goes to the east. We either take public transit. Uh, sometimes she walks home, but mostly she rides her bike over there. And, um, it is, uh, we've had to, you know, designate specific, uh, pathways, uh, for her and roadways to, to go to school to, in order to ensure that she's safe. So what can we do? I mean, um, uh, I have supported all increases in funding to make sure that there's safety or rebuilding of the sidewalks and that there are dedicated bike lanes that they go through the neighborhoods. So, uh, students can find alternative ways than just, you know, uh, the main roads to be on. And I'd continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Yeah, I'm for bikeability and walkability, but what are you doing in the winter months when it's a snowstorm, ice, torrential rain? What do you do? That's why they invented the automobile. And the problem here is the first thing I would do, I could create two hundred seventy-five parking spots in front of a high school with a big, nice, beautiful green lawn. I would bulldoze it, put two hundred seventy-five parking spaces there for the teachers, for the students. Because some students like to drive. We're in the twenty-first century yet. You know, I went to school in the seventies and eighties. I drove the school in the eighties. Yeah, I mean, kids do that in high school. Not everybody walks to school. If you're gonna walk from Teal Square or Mcgoon Square to Somerville High, that's a long walk in the rain, snow and the ice. You gotta face it. To wait in the bus stop all that time, it's not that great either. How are you gonna drive a bicycle? They come with snow tires, they come with half tracks. They don't. We're living in the real world here. We have to focus on common sense. Common sense is what the city lacks. Common sense is what I'm gonna bring back to the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Will?
Thank you. Uh, I will say, I'll be quick on this one because I sit on, uh, I'm on the steering commi- committee for Somerville Alliance for Safe Street. We talk about these issues a lot. But one of the things, you know, I think we should be, uh, uh, fighting for is to make sure that public transportation is free in Somerville. We need to talk about that. We need to expand bike lanes. Protected bike lane is something we should be advocating for. And lastly, one thing I've come to realize, you know, in, in this society, or, you know, or even, yeah, in this society at large is that if you're a person with disability, you're almost invisible. So we need to add, you know, curb cuts for students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let every candidate have a thirty-second closing, so just thirty seconds to wrap up. And then y'all can get to your finance meeting if need be. We'll go in reverse alphabetical order. So Billy, Will, Mary, Katiana.
Uh, Megan, Regina, and, um, the, I wanna thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to, you know, speak my mind here. I plan on bringing a lot of changes to the city of Somerville, a lot of changes to the mayor's office. I wanna, I want, I'm looking for the best for our residents, the best for our students, the best for our teachers, firefighters and police departments. They deserve their very best. They worked, they, they, they worked very hard and I'm sure everyone is, is on the same thing. My, 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 oh, I'll have an open door policy in the mayor's office. They can always come and talk to me and I plan on bringing everything.
Thank you. That was time. Will?
Yeah, am I muted?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanna say thank you because it's, uh, I'm always excited when I get a chance to talk about, you know, my vision, my guiding principles, my priorities. So I wanna thank you for taking the time to talk. You know, I respect you. I have so much respect for teachers and our fellow professionals. And, you know, I look forward to partnering with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Adding my thanks. It was a great opportunity. I wish we had more time to talk. I didn't get to talk about the health center we've invested in and even doing dental health for the students, the unaccompanied minors, and using the dental assistance at the high school to, for training pathways. So I feel like there's so much else to say, but it's all about shared values. It's all about partnerships. It's about an open door policy and it's about listening. So thank you all because this was a great start to all of that.
And Katiana?
Uh, I wanna say thank you also to the SEU and thank you to, uh, my colleagues here who are, uh, you know, vying for, uh, this position. You know, I, um, uh, believe, uh, that, uh, we need to see a Somerville city of inclusion with equity where everyone can thrive together. And, uh, if you share this vision, I hope I can earn your support and endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you all. At this point, I'm going to un-spotlight the mayoral candidates. I'll spotlight the school committee candidates. And thank you so much for this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, those that are here, uh, school committee candidates, if you haven't already, if you can put SC for school committee ahead of your name with your award, that would be very helpful. Mr. Stefano, you can hang, hang strong right there. And Megan is spotlighting individuals as they make that change with their name. And if we've missed you, please let us know.
I think that is everyone. So. I know you've been here listening to the forum, but as a review, how it will work is we'll begin with a two-minute introduction. And from there, we have a series of ninety-second questions. Steve Stefano is here. He'll hold up a red card when you have ten seconds left in your response time. So that is your ten-second warning. And when they're, after those ten seconds, you will be muted if you are still talking. And the norms of speaking respectfully to each other and to the moderators still hold. So to begin, we'll do two-minute introduction and we'll go alphabetically by last name. So that would be Scott, then Sarah, then, or Sarah Dion, then Greg, then Sarah Phillips. So Scott, two minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Scott Benjamin. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I came to Somerville twenty-eight years ago to work with kids. I have a second grader at the West Somerville Neighborhood School. I'm a twenty-year member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association. I'm a professor at Bunker Hill Community College. Um, this is my twentieth year there. Thank you amid a pandemic. I've been the men's head coach, soccer coach there for seventeen years. I earned a doctorate in curriculum and teaching from BU. Uh, when I first came to Somerville, I, uh, worked with kids at North Street and the Mystic Housing Developments, trying to get them involved with programs and running after-school programs. From there, I moved on to teach at Roxbury Community College and then at Bunker Hill. Bunker Hill is one of the most diverse, uh, colleges in the, in the country. And I've had a lot of experience working with underrepresented, underserved kids. Um, the soccer players in particular are eighty and ninety percent, uh, African-American, Cape Verdean and Latinx students. And, you know, a lot of times we, we talk about the, the, the lacking that these kids have. And, you know, my experience is these kids are awesome. They're amazing. They possess so much cultural wealth, hu- human capital. You know, they're savvy, they're smart, they have language skills. Um, and I think we need to focus on that. Because when we focus on the strengths, then we can't rely on saying, oh, you know, we didn't have those kids, but they didn't have the background to do it. Right? Um, and it comes back. You know, my first day of kindergarten, when I brought my, my daughter to kindergarten, we walked in and who greeted us at the door? Les Lartay, a kid that I had at the Boys and Girls Club. And now he's the assistant principal at the Healy. And he took advantage of those out-of-school programs and the school programs. And, um, it just shows you, you know, he was appreciated for what he had. Um, I think if we do that, we can reach equity and excellence for all the kids in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Dion?
Hi. Good evening, fellow educators. My name is Sarah Dion and I teach elementary English learners right next door in the Medford Public Schools. I am honored to be here tonight among so many dedicated and talented professionals. I've been an educator for the last ten years and a labor organizer for almost as long. My journey into the field of union organizing started in two thousand and fourteen when I was elected as a building rep at my school. I soon realized that being an educator organizer was what I was meant to do. In the two thousand sixteen election cycle, I coordinated and led the no-on-two phone banking effort within my local, recruiting and empowering colleagues to join in the fight against privatization. And of course, that was a fight that we won. I went on to serve as an MTA summer member organizer in the wake of the Janus decision by the Supreme Court in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, where I helped take grassroots organizing to a whole new level, traveling around the metro area and engaging fellow educators in meaningful conversations about the importance of our union. I might have talked to some of you then. I don't know. Um, again, that was thankfully a fight that we continue to win. I have also served as a delegate to MTA annual meeting for several years. And I was recently elected to MTA's Candidate Recommendation Committee after an endorsement from EDU, a progressive caucus within MTA. I see serving on the school committee as the next step in this journey, bringing an educator organizer's perspective to all school committee proceedings. But enough about me, I wanna hand it to all of you. I think we can all agree that the last sixteen months have been some of the most difficult we've ever had to face as educators. And I wanna say that I see you. Paraprofessionals who fought and won a landmark contract victory in the fight for a living wage. Collective bargaining team who stood your ground and demanded a safe return to in-person school for all of your members. I see you and I stand with you in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
And hello, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to participate. Particularly in this challenging year and this hot, hot week, thank you for dedicating the extra time after a long day to meet with us. My name is Greg Nadeau. I live and work at Five Thorn Dyke Street with my wife, Carrie Lorigan. Carrie's a grade seven teacher at Watertown Middle School. I'm a public education consultant with a background and focus in learning systems. We've raised our two boys here, Max, who graduated from the high school in two thousand and nineteen, and Charlie, who will graduate from the high school next year. Many of you may know them. As you all know from your work every day, young people in Somerville have almost ten times the poverty level of Arlington. Over the last thirty years, while parts of Somerville has brought new wealth to the city, the school age population has doubled its poverty rate. Thirty years ago, there were ten thousand kids in our schools. Now there are half of that. I actively contributed to the community for the past twenty years. Ten years ago, I started an after-school program called Not Just Lego that provided after-school learning opportunities to diverse range of kids. Five years ago, I kicked off the plan that will transform the back of the Healy to become an incredible new park to open this summer. Four years ago, I served as treasurer of the campaign to build the state-of-the-art new high school that will, that will fully open next fall. Three years ago, I helped start the Somerville Education Foundation and have raised and distributed over three hundred thousand dollars to provide more equitable access to basic needs, out-of-school time and applied learning. My kids are almost done here with Somerville Public Schools, but I wanna remain involved. I'm running for school committee to work with all of you to prioritize more equitable access to out-of-school time programs and applied learning experiences such as internships, job placements for all young people, to accelerate the transition from MCAS and letter grades to personalized competency-based learning, and to shift the focus from overly formal meetings to collaborative working groups with educators, students and the community. Thank you again for all that you do for young people.
Thank you. And Sarah Phillips?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Phillips and I'm running for reelection in Ward Three. Before I introduce myself, I wanna thank all of you at the SEU for your incredible work over the past sixteen months. I am lucky to serve our kids alongside you. For those of you who don't know me very well, I grew up in an activist family. My parents helped start one of the oldest women centers in the country. And one of my earliest memories is skating away for the ERA, the Equal Rights Amendment. Because of my parents' example, I've always been involved in social justice activism. I learned to organize through summer internships with Acorn and APSME. And I was part of a grassroots coalition that helped win weekend subway service for three low-income communities of color in Chicago. Like many of you, I'm a person who really loves learning. So it's not surprising that education has always been the issue motivating my activism. After college, I taught middle school in the Oakland Public Schools and high school in the County Juvenile Hall. Because of these experiences, the rest of my career has focused on trying to understand and address racial inequity in public education. I spent six years as a community social worker and now work as a researcher. Education is what I do in my profession, but it's also what I do in my life. I've been active in Somerville's education scene ever since moving to town in two thousand and ten. My daughter's in fourth grade at the Argentiano. My son will be in kindergarten next year. I was elected to the school committee in two thousand and nineteen and it has been an honor to represent Ward Three during the coronavirus pandemic. During my first term in office, I was a strong ally to the paraprofessionals. I worked hard for a student center and science-based school reopening. And I proposed and helped pass policies improving inclusivity in our schools, including a recent motion to pause the SRO and STEPS program. I'm running for reelection because I wanna keep representing my community as we rebuild and reinvent.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you everyone for your introductions. And with that, we'll move into our first question. This question is a bit lengthy, so if you need to repeat it, don't hesitate to say so. Currently, in Somerville Public Schools, we have a math and ELA coaches, but not social studies or science coaches. Math and ELA often get more class time than science or social studies. And administrators work with teachers extensively on math and ELA, but not social studies and science. How would you like to see our schools changed so that they are less focused around student success on standardized tests such as MCAS? Do you support our schools spending equal time and resources on all academic subjects? You'll have a minute and thirty seconds to respond. Steve Stefano will raise the red paper at the ten-second mark. Sarah Dion, followed by Sarah Phillips, followed by Greg, and then Scott. Sarah Dion?
Hi. So yes, I absolutely support a well-rounded education for all students. Um, I even said, um, I recently have been involved with the cancel MCAS movement within the MTA. Um, and I wrote an op-ed about it, um, and made some videos about it for my campaign page. And one thing that I said was that, the, that because of MCAS has only deepened the inequities. Because now students from lower-income districts that are, you know, poor scoring on MCAS are getting a less well-rounded education, robbed of social studies, science, art, music, foreign language, in favor of this hyper-focus on math and ELA. And it's, it's just, you know, it, it's, it's not right. So, yeah, I would love to see not only social studies and science coaches, but also a focus on social emotional learning, art, music, foreign language, a well-rounded education for our students. Because, because that's what they deserve. And that's what students in wealthier districts are getting because they don't have to worry about their MCAS scores most of the time. Um, so yeah, I would love to see, um, just more of a, a return to a more well-rounded edu-
Thank you very much, Sarah. Sarah Phillips? Sorry, I'm gonna make this mistake all night. I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
For people who knew me in college was Phil, so if that helps, you could come. Um, so right, we're all really clear. The reason that we don't have social studies and science coaches in our classrooms is standardized testing movement in this country and the obsessive focus on getting kids proficient in math and English language arts. That is not all our kids need to thrive and we need to expand it. Um, this past year, I sponsored a resolution for the school committee calling out for a moratorium on the MCAS. Um, if reelected, I will continue to sponsor resolutions like that and work with the MTA and MASC and Citizens for Public Schools and others to reduce the high-stakes testing burden in our schools. Because that's what I see as the root cause of this problem. I'll also continue to fight for coaching and professional development in all our core academic subjects, but also our, our electives, right? Because that's also what kids need to thrive. You can reclaim my time.
Thank you very much. Greg?
Thanks, Sarah. Um, like all of you, I support holistic education for all students. We do need to recognize that there is a limit to what could be done during the school day and that only twenty percent- and that only 20% of kids' awake time is in school. We need to focus on learning across all of their time. Kid eating, like, learning is something that needs to happen around the clock all school year. I would like to work with all of you to support a transition, not just from MCAS, but from letter grades to more personalized competency-based learning. I think we all appreciate that an A may mean that a student is achieving well, but a B and a C means a lot of different things. It could mean that the student is having issues with completing their assignments. It could mean that they're chronically absent. We need to do a better job of communicating about all types of learning. So that's one of the things that I really want to work on with all of you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Scott?
Yeah, high-stakes testing is, I'm in agreement with everybody here. And we know it doesn't achieve the goals that it set out to achieve. And, you know, focusing on well-rounded education, giving the teachers the resources. When the teachers have the resources and the time, we, I mean, you're all teachers, right? And you're all professionals. You have the ability to bring the kids up to do what they need if you have the support. And, you know, competency, like Greg had mentioned, competency, competency. I can't even say it. How competent am I? The competency-based, you know, standards that teachers can work toward. Because, you know, I'm a teacher myself. When I know what I have to work toward, I can find a way because kids need individualized instruction, not, it's not a cookie cutter thing. Every kid is different. So I would, I would work to support, you know, trying to get those resources, trying to get the coaching across the board because the kids need it, and we fail them if we're only kind of concentrating on math and ELA only. Not that they're not important, but we need well-rounded education, and I think that's how we could achieve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next question, and the order will be Greg, Scott, Sarah Phillips, Sarah Dion. Question is, the current starting salary for a Somerville paraprofessional is $25,000. MIT's Living Wage Calculator estimates that a living wage in Middlesex County would be $35,000. Would you support a $35,000 starting salary for Somerville paraprofessionals and why or why not? Greg, and then Scott.
Yes, absolutely. It seems like a basic issue of fairness. And frankly, I don't understand why that did not happen, why the process was as broken as it was. It seems obvious to anyone with common sense that a living wage and a fair wage is a bare minimum to support educators who are working with kids. I think we need to think about different ways of approaching collective bargaining in order to secure long-term wage fairness and security and would work to support that.
Thank you, Greg. Scott?
Yes, I would support that. Actually, you know, and I don't want to be a total jerk, I think that the calculation is now over $40,000 is the living wage in Middlesex. And, yeah, I mean, and I don't even like the name para professionals because these folks are professionals that are working with our kids, right? And I think that we need to provide a living wage for those folks. I think, you know, also in our attempts to diversify our teaching core, some pathways towards, working towards teaching for some of our paras because in the school district, many of our paras are from underrepresented communities. I think that would be a great way to reach the living wage and to enrich our community. I think, again, you know, looking at the contracts and how we negotiate them is an important aspect. And even other funding sources from, you know, there's a lot of community benefits that are supposed to be coming in from the development that's in our area that could be put towards education. So I think there is a way, if we prioritize the education of our kids, that we can find the funding to make that happen for these very important resources for our teachers and kids.
Thank you. Sarah Phillips?
So I don't think I ever got to tell you my para story. When I was a teacher, I had the great privilege of working with four para professionals. They were all immigrants. They were all people of color. They were the only reason I was able to talk to my students' families and for some of my students to talk directly to my students. I was an engaging teacher. People liked me, kids liked me, but I wasn't actually a very good teacher. Ms. Niem, who was one of my paras, was a trained teacher in Vietnam, who credentialed and transferred when she got here. She's the only reason my kids got differentiated instruction those first couple of years. So I was a strong ally to the para professionals. My first motion on the school committee was to have school committee members present at negotiations. When you guys shut down a school committee meeting after we went to mediation, I'm the one that came up with the compromise that got everybody home. I was a strong ally to the para professionals during the last fight. I'll be a strong ally in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Dion?
Yes, so this is absolutely a no-brainer. I remember I heard one of your para professionals speak at a recent MTA event about just how difficult it was to even secure the starting salary of $25,000. And it just blew my mind. I don't understand how, you know, she said that nobody on the school committee even attended the negotiations for the para professionals. And that just, like, was crazy to me. I, in my work as with, as a union organizer, my local recently endorsed MTA's ESP Bill of Rights. You know, I'm sure you all know a set of demands statewide for ESPs or para professionals. Yeah, and so I just think, you know, especially with what the cost of living in Somerville is. And I, what Scott said, $40,000 sounds more like what the actual living wage is, especially, you know, Cambridge-Somerville. And it's just, it's just criminal that, you know, we're not, that we're not giving some of our most vital education workers this livable wage.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. I've lost my question. Oh, we're back. Okay. The order of this, for this question would be Sarah Phillips, Greg, Scott, and Sarah Dion. Will you commit to a policy that at least one member of the school committee be present with a full speaking role for contract negotiations with Somerville Public School employees?
Yes. I was on the negotiating committee during the portion of the MOU related to metrics and thresholds, and I was a full member of the committee. So I think the notion that we are there as observers is fake anyway. And so I would absolutely support clarifying what our role actually is because we are the ones that sign those contracts.
Thank you. Greg?
I believe executive sessions should be extremely rare. I believe formalized school committee meetings should also be used more sparingly than they are. I believe we should be creating much more participatory, open, inclusive, transparent processes that include students, educators, parents, and community members wherever possible. I don't think that we should be negotiating contracts behind closed doors. I think we should be having a much more open, transparent process. I think that we should be using the executive sessions primarily for personnel issues when there is a specific privacy issue at stake. Otherwise, I believe we need to transform our school committee processes to be dramatically more open and inclusive than they are today.
Sergeant, I just needed, thank you, Scott?
Yeah, I would support, you know, having the school committee members on the contract negotiations. I mean, we are supposed to be the voice of our constituents. And, you know, if we're negotiating a contract for teachers or paras that are teaching our children here, they need a voice at that table, and we are supposed to be that voice there. You know, I agree too. Greg mentioned something I think very important. Executive sessions can be kind of dangerous if you go down that road all the time. And so, I mean, I just think the transparency is important, but I think the voice of the community as you negotiate the contracts is important. And that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to be our constituents' voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Dion?
Yes, absolutely. I think that there should definitely be open bargaining. I agree that the use of executive session should be very rare. I don't like the idea of, you know, people getting together ahead of time to see like, ooh, you know, how are we gonna, you know, this closed-room kind of thing? I, that's not how I've ever operated. That's not a way of operating that I think is progressive or inclusive. And so I agree that executive sessions should be a very rare thing and that there should absolutely be a school committee presence at negotiations. Because I think that obviously there is, you know, an imbalance of power between central administration and the workers, especially when the workers are not even being paid a living wage. And so I think that, you know, with educators' allies on the school committee, there does need to be a school committee presence there at the negotiations. And yeah, and I think negotiations should not be behind closed doors. I think it should be open to the public because I think, you know, some of the tactics used by administration at various times, if that was, you know, in the public eye, you know, public perception would kind of shift. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next question, speaking order responses will be Sarah Phillips, Sarah Dion, Scott, and then Greg. And the question is, how do you feel about DSE having the ability to override the decisions of Somerville's school committee, considering that school committee members are elected officials and DSE officials are appointed by the governor? Sarah Phillips, we'll start with you.
It's a really uncomfortable issue that I think is really context-specific. And so I think it will be helpful to talk about my position about DSE's move in the pandemic. And for me, my position started during the budget fight. The, I don't remember when we were doing it, March or April before, when Tessa called me, Romney's wife, called me to lobby me to overrule the mayor's proposed budget. And she said to me, basically, not quoting her word for word, "Sarah, if the school committee is not for our kids, if the school committee is not doing things that are in the best interest of our kids, what good are you?" And that has really been my guiding star throughout my first term. And so my position on school reopening was really a position about what did I think was in the best interest of our kids? And by December, it was pretty clear to me, or I felt really strongly that what was in the best interest of our kids was going back to school full-time, right? And I need you to know that that's not a position I take lightly. As some of you know, my mom's dead, my daughter's dead. So I'm super risk averse about things that could kill you. But by December, a lot of kids in Somerville were hurting, and they were hurting bad. And I was convinced by doctors at NGH and TOFS and CHA with proper mitigation measures.
Thank you, Sarah. That was time. Sarah Dion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. How do you feel about DSE having the ability to override the decisions of Somerville's school committee, considering that school committee members are elected officials and DSE officials are appointed by the governor?
When that top-down directive came, it felt like a slap in the face. Our joint labor management team within the Medford Teachers Association had worked hours tirelessly to construct this MOA. And then with, you know, one stroke of the governor and Jeff Riley's pen, it's just, okay, now aspects of that are null and void. And that was really terrifying. You know, COVID rates were at a high in November, December. And until, you know, there were many days when I didn't really feel safe going into work, even, you know, with my mask and face shield. I just did not feel safe. And the fact that the governor and the commissioner, who are these, you know, wealthy, class-white men dictating this directive for the whole state that's, you know, educators, which is a largely female profession, a lot of, you know, people of color in different positions, and we're obviously, I would consider us a working-class profession. And to have this directive passed down was just, I just had never felt more disrespected.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah. Again, it kind of goes back to what I said in the last question. I feel we're supposed to be representing our community and the voices of our community and taking that into account. And, you know, DSE, they are professionals and people have background to make recommendations. And I think that's not a bad thing. But it's difficult when you're trying to work at your community level with, you know, your particular, your specific population. And this isn't just COVID. This is across any kind of education decision. And, you know, Somerville is not Newton. It is not the same population. It is not the same teachers. It is not the same kids. It's not the same tax base. It is not the same. And if DSE mandates those kind of things, it takes away the ability and the powers of, like, what the school committee, what the union, what the local government is trying to do. And so, you know, I feel like, I think DSE has, like I said, educated people who do know what they're talking about. But to have that sort of power to override the local decisions based on local conditions is, you know, I don't feel good about that. I don't think that should happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg?
Massachusetts is unique in that our constitution requires the state to cherish our students. And we are a state that has, that has really excelled in education. But the state also needs to know, and the federal government needs to know, that decisions are best made locally. When I say locally, I mean not the school committee. I mean the schools. I think that in general, we should devolve almost all decisions to school-based management. I think that we should also, on the specific issue of school reopening, I think we need to look really seriously at transferring the responsibility for maintenance and operation of our school buildings from the city back to the school district, as many other districts do.
Thanks all.
All right, thank you. We're coming up on what I believe is our last scheduled question for you, I guess I would say. And so educators, if you'd like, use the link that's been posted in the chat to submit questions to candidates. And the order for questions this time will be Sarah Dion, Greg, Scott, followed by Sarah Phillips. Here's the question needs. Many school committee votes are unanimous after discussion in executive session. Do you believe this practice is adequately transparent? What will you do to increase transparency and accountability of school committee members to voters?
Yeah, so like I said before, I feel like open meetings should be the norm. Like, just like I said, the idea of, you know, having an executive session, like, right before contract negotiations, you know, it feels kind of a little, you know, a little like old boys' club to me. And I don't think, you know, obviously, I mean, the very nature of an executive session is not to be transparent. So I think the question kind of answers itself in that regard. And yeah, I would advocate for more open meetings and fewer executive sessions because it is, it's, you know, school committee, we're elected officials, elected by the public. We should be accountable to the public and accessible to the public. And when you go into executive session, you know, as a routine norm, um, I just, I just don't think that's what that's not the model that a lacted body should follow.
Thank you. Uh, we lost about the last fifteen seconds of what you said, Sarah, so if it's, I just, it's, it's your Wi-Fi and I just wanted to make sure that each candidate had got their time fairly.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll rewind a little bit. I think what I said was that school committee are officials that are elected by the public and we should therefore be accountable to the public. And by using executive sessions as a norm, that's not an accountable practice because you're not accessible to the public in in those times. So I think, you know, the use of executive session as a routine, you know, as something that you always do, I, I don't think that that that's something that should really go.
All right. Thank you so very much. And next we do have Greg.
So my campaign is inspired by the principle that nothing about us, without us, is for us. So if I'm elected, I will work to really make youth voice central to every decision-making. I think when we make decisions and there aren't youth there at the meeting, we should leave an empty chair and remind ourselves that we need to do better last next time. I think we should reduce the number and length and formal school committee meetings that we should, uh, record everyone, stream, transcribe and translate, um, all the formal meetings. I think we should create, as I mentioned, uh, less formal project-based working groups where school committee members can work with teachers, students and community members to solve problems together. I think we should support native language, social network and events where English is secondary. I think we should create physical and digital teen centers where youth voice and culture can thrive. And I think we should use surveys, focus groups and school assemblies to generate more student voice. I think we need to change the way that we make decisions. I think we need to, um, have much more participation openly. And then when we make formal decisions, then they should be, um, as I mentioned, transcribed and translated.
Thank you very much. Scott?
Yeah, um, I mentioned this before, you know, when, when, and and Sarah said this too, when executive sessions become the norm, then something isn't normal, like that's not right. And, um, I do believe, you know, there are, there are times there and there are times when there's personnel issues. There are specific legal issues that are not, can, they cannot be divulged publicly. And and those are the times when executive session, you know, might be used. I, I think a look at the rules and the criteria of when executive sessions are used is is necessary. Um, so, so we can refine it down and just use them in those exceptional cases when, when, when they might be required by by law, right? Because, you know, more transparency is generally, not generally, it's always a good thing, right? It, it makes us more accountable. It makes all the stakeholders more accountable. So I, I think that that a review of when executive session is used and under the criteria and the rules when it uses is necessary. And then we work to be more transparent and and open in our meetings with broadcasting them or transcripts or or, um, and translation as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Sarah Phillips?
So I've been thinking a lot about this issue and I actually think that the root cause is the structure of the school committee. Right? The city council is elected and the mayor is elected and they're equal, so they fight what they want to do. The school committee hires and fires the superintendent. She works for us. And so we operate a little more like a nonprofit board. And members do a lot of giving advice and asking questions. And when decisions are made, they tend to vote unanimously, the way the superintendent wants to vote. Um, I think it's really important, like one critical component of being transparent and accountable as a school committee is to actually make decisions. And so I've proposed over and over during my first term in office motions, making us make decisions. Whether it's a decision that we really want the mayor to say, yeah, if you go back for an additional appropriation to the city council, I'm going to support it. Whether it's a decision to invite experts to come talk to us about the science of coronavirus and transmission in schools because I don't trust what I'm hearing, or whether it's a decision to pause the S R O steps program. For me, that is just really critical to actually being policymakers and holding ourselves accountable to the voters. The second thing I think is really critical is to going to the people, right? We hear a lot from certain groups of people who are happy to come talk to us about what they want. But we hear less from people of color, from immigrants. And so I've tried really hard during my first term in office to build relationships and go to where people are at, whether that's having office hours with the Welcome Project or, uh, working closely with Teen Empowerment to get youth voice to the table. I'll continue.
Thank you so much, Sarah. That was time.
At this point, we have a few questions from the educators in the audience. Some of them are targeted to individual candidates and some are general questions for all four of you.
Can I just ask the moderators if you want to do a minute and a half or a minute? It's up to you.
I think a minute at this point is good. We did a minute for the mayoral as well.
Okay.
All right, one minute then. And first question is directed to Sarah Phillips. Sarah, I noticed that your campaign team includes multiple parents who spoke very disparagingly about the S E U over the last year, one of whom described the bargaining team, quote, "as creatures of the union" and didn't support educators. Why should we endorse you when you didn't support us and disparage the extremely hard work of this union of educators?
I'm sorry if you felt like having a member of special on my post-committee for my kickoff was disparaging you. That was not in any way meant to to do that. And it's a lesson learned for me. I really value the work of the S E U. I think I've been a strong supporter, uh, for much of this year. We disagreed fundamentally about school reopening, but I worked really hard to, um, get an agreement on hybrid learning that prioritized kids and also took the needs of educators into account. I'm the one who made sure that that, uh, M L U had a role for educators to review when we decide to go back into schools after temporarily closing it. Um, I'm the one that pushed really hard to push educators to the front of the vaccine line. Um, so I have been a strong supporter of you, um, but I hear your concern and I apologize.
Thank you. Our next question is a general question for all candidates. Um, we'll start with Scott, followed by Sarah Dionne, followed by Greg Madoff, and then followed by Sarah Phillips. This question needs, and of course it goes blank. Okay, here we are. Anyone who watches the school committee meetings sees that we only hear from a small subgroup of the families in Somerville. What will you do to engage more families? Please be specific.
Yeah, um, there, there is a vocal set in in Somerville that that influences a lot. And I mean, I mean, that's okay. People need to be vocal. But it, it requires you to go out into the community. And I think, you know, um, this might sound kind of silly, but if we had school committee in in your ward, you had events at the school for the school committee where you could hear this kid and maybe you had a student council, um, a cultural night that might attract uh, folks here at West Somerville, we, we used to have this cultural night and and lots of people from the Haitian and the Latinx community would come in because they felt valued. And that's where you could hear the voices of those people that we don't hear from. Um, we have to be creative about that. And and specific events at our schools, if we want to hear from that that population is is a way to do that. Um, making connections, you know, even just today, I, well, I, my red card's up, sorry.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Scott. Sarah Dionne?
Um, I agree that I think attending school events can be a great way to engage families that wouldn't, you know, necessarily show up to school committee meetings because the families are there to support their kids, you know, going to like a graduation or another, you know, type of event that parents and families would be at and talking to them there. Um, I speak a little bit of Spanish, um, and that's definitely very helpful in communicating with families. I also think, um, just, you know, doing like canvassing around the neighborhood, either, um, you know, just in like finding a spot to hang out and talk to people or to just kind of knock on people's doors just to hear their thoughts. Um, and I think also there's, um, there's an app that I use, a family communication app that I use as an educator, um, called Talking Points, and it translates in different languages. It would be interesting to see if like that could somehow be used for a school committee to communicate with families.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, that was time. We're going to follow this up, I believe, with Greg, and then we'll end it, Sarah.
Yeah, as I stated, I believe that the key to more diverse participation is youth voice. Um, while we need to recognize that many immigrant families do not feel comfortable participating in formalized democratic processes like school committee meetings, um, with Robert's Rules of Orders, um, there are less barriers to getting kids involved and through them to their families. I believe that it's a mistake to focus so much on the school committee meetings. They should be shorter. They should be focused on decision-making. I think we really need to think differently about a new blended vision of democracy where we have all sorts of different types of participation leading up to a formal rulemaking. As one example of that, in the Somerville Education Foundation, and we support a program called Youth Stream at the Mystic that created a Discord channels for teens to be able to express themselves in poetry slams and engage in different issues. That's authentic student voice. We need to use that in order to inform our decisions.
All right. Thank you, Sarah Phillips.
I apologize, but could I ask you to restate the question?
Absolutely. Not a problem at all. Just let me pull it up again. I'm on the wrong screen. And here we are. Anyone who watches school committee meetings sees that we only hear from a small subgroup of the families in Somerville. What will you do to engage more families? Please be specific.
Thanks. So as the organizer, I know that you go to where the people are. They're not at school committee meetings. They're not often at our schools, right? So when I took office, I started trying to build relationships with the groups and organizations that it seemed like the people that I wanted to reach, immigrants and people of color and young people trusted. So I went to talk to the pastor at Connection, talked about how we could meet with his, um, um, churchgoers to find out what they were concerned about. I went to talk to Teen Empowerment to talk about what did they think about our suspension policy? I moved my office hours from places like, in the past, school committee did office hours at places like Forge and Block 11. I moved them to the Public Library. I reached out to the Immigrant Services Unit to find out how we could translate materials, how we could get translators there. Then the pandemic hit and I moved things online. I'm really excited that we've started having office hours um, at schools and that we are paying for translation, uh, more and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next question from the audience is for all candidates. The mayor candidates were asked about the relationship between the mayor and school committee. Will you be willing to stand up to the mayor and add money to the school budget? And the question or answer order is Greg, Sarah Phillips, Sarah Dionne, Scott. So Greg.
I, yes, absolutely. Um, I, um, would be a strong advocate for programs for youth, as I have been for the past twenty years. I know the members of the school committee, the city council, the mayor, the superintendent. I call them directly. I advocate for things. I'm in, in no way afraid of advocating. And I'm fundamentally someone who thinks independently about things and then leans in hard to make change happen. You know, one example of that is the out-of-school-time coordinator position that was being created for the summer. And, um, I worked really hard to advocate for that to be funded as a full-time position to attract the top notch person who is now filling that role. Um, and I would be absolutely not afraid to support additional funding for for schools.
Thanks, Greg. Sarah Phillips?
Yes, um, I was prepared to, uh, propose that the school committee increase the budget uh, one percent over what the mayor, the two-point something that the mayor was going to give us last time. Um, I didn't, because I didn't have the social capital to pass it. What I did have the social capital to pass was a resolution saying that if we needed more money, we would go back to city council and ask it. And I amended that resolution to get the mayor on record saying that, yes, he would support that. Um, over the past year and a half, I've built relationships with my colleagues. So I hope if we're in a position where we need to advocate for more money for our kids in schools, that I'll have the power to make it happen.
Thank you. Sarah Dionne?
Um, yes, I definitely think that, you know, you, you need to stand up for what's right, um, even when it's hard. And I think that I would definitely be able to stand up to, you know, whoever, whoever the new mayor is. Um, and, you know, figure out where, you know, what places money could be reallocated from. I would definitely be in favor of reallocating some of the police budget into the schools. Um, because we're just, you know, in investing in our youth, um, instead of, instead of investing in, you know, a system that can at times be punitive and violent. Um, and so I think that is definitely something I would be in favor of.
Thank you. And Scott?
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but but yes, you know, um, we're in this for our kids and and for the teachers. So of course, we want to stand up for that. At Bunker Hill, I've advocated a lot. It may sound weird for money in athletics because we specifically work a lot with undocumented students. That's how we can get students into school and and with a underrepresented population. And athletics is often seen as a not beneficial thing for academia, but it is in this case. You know, we have a seventy-two percent pass rate with the African-American, Latinx students, nineteen to twenty-three in athletics, where it's only seventeen percent in the general population. And, um, so, so, I mean, of course, I think all of us would stand up to the mayor to advocate for for increased budgets for specific programs that we need.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Our next question was submitted specifically for Greg. Um, the question reads, Greg, in your TED Talk, you spoke about the value of blogging as a way to learn to write to get feedback from family members. Given the inequities our students face, would you revise anything about that TED Talk?
No, I mean, I, yeah, I guess, yes, I'd, I'd say that, uh, device and internet access is insufficient to provide home use. And what we really need to be focusing on is safe, um, comfortable spaces for kids to do work. Um, now, I think it is true that blogging is something that kids can do on their Chromebooks. And every kid has access to Chromebook. So I don't think that there is a barrier to blogging. I do think that writing is something that's important for all kids to do. And that the simple math that I expressed in the TED Talk is that, you know, a teacher has, you know, if they're in, in high school, they have a hundred and twenty-five kids, um, to provide feedback on. A kid could have five adults of parents and trusted adults to provide feedback for their work. And that's critical to um, give them an audience for their, for their, for their writing and work.
Thank you.
And at this point, we'll just do thirty-second closing from all candidates, just thirty seconds, and we'll go reverse alphabetically. So it'll be, um, Sarah Phillips, Greg, Sarah Dionne, and Scott. Sarah Phillips, thirty-second closing.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to come talk with you. I really love working with you and I, and I hope to do it more. I didn't get a chance to talk about my priorities for the next term. Um, so just to put them out there, it's a student and healing-centered recovery uh, for, for all our kids and a recovery that gives, gives our kids the kind of diverse, equitable and inclusive learning environments they need and deserve. Thank you for your time. I hope to earn your endorsement.
Thank you, Sarah. Greg?
For the past twenty years, I've been an advocate for kids and I intend to continue for the rest of my life. Uh, whether or not I'm elected to the school committee, I'll continue to volunteer my time and to work hard on behalf of all kids in Somerville. That's what I do. That's what's my, that's what I care about. And if I'm elected to the school committee, it'll give me some additional ways to have that type of impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Sarah Dionne?
Um, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I try to approach all my work from a place of compassion. Um, and my work on the school committee would be no different. Um, as an educator, And my work on the school committee would be no different. As an educator, I try to show my compassion for my students in my work every day. And I've learned as a labor organizer that what's good for educators is good for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And Scott?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. This is my first time in this kind of forum, and I really appreciate it. If I could, you know, be elected and earn your endorsement, I would fight for affordable out-of-school-time programs, recruitment and retention of teachers that reflect the diversity of our school system, supports for the teachers, college readiness programs. I see that as a very important part. And STEM education, science, not just math and technology, to get our kids ready for the jobs that are in this, in this state. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all so much for this discussion tonight.